Okay. All right, just the little things.
We've got a D1 scholarship here.
Okay.
This is nice, yeah.
It is 5:45, maybe even a minute or so passed. So I will call to order the regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council for Thursday, June 3, 2021, in our newly renovated meeting room.
Yay!
All right. Thank you to all the staff that were involved in this. This is very impressive. We start with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. So if you will rise, please. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have approximately 15 minutes allowed for public comment. There are four people present who wish to speak. If there is anyone who is on virtually that wishes to speak, please raise your hand at this time, and staff will let me know. Okay, I guess not.
Ken Fitch, you've been unmuted.
I can't hear you. I can't hear what they're saying.
Ken Fitch, you've been unmuted.
Ken Fitch?
Yes, Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. In reference to the agenda item concerning an agreement exchanging certain property...
We will take the people who are present first, and I will call you after that.
Uh-oh, no problem.
Thank you. All right. First on the list, Indion Jackson. And you know the drill. Name, address for the clerk's record. Thank you.
I do. Okay, so, name, Indion Jackson, address, 11 Mountain Row, Hendersonville, North Carolina, 28792. That's it, right? Okay. All right, so, you know what? Thank you for the Juneteenth proclamation. That's a... The dedication is awesome. It's a huge step forward. It's gonna be a great day of celebration and culture, and I hope you all come and visit, come and celebrate with us, because it's just gonna be an amazing day of black culture. You know, and I'm not gonna tell you all the history of Juneteenth, but hopefully you all come and just learn the history. Crystal Colley has put on a great, a great show for you guys. It's gonna be fun. I want you all to keep that in mind, keeping that in mind, after you all come and celebrate with us, celebrating our culture, and just, you know, what we do to keep our heads above water. You know, I want you all to remember this. You know, black people still are overwhelmingly underrepresented in your decision rooms. The Emancipation Proclamation, it was a government order. It was issued by the President of the United States of America. Somehow, it didn't reach Texas. And although it was issued by the President of the United States of America, it did not reach Texas. Two and a half years, it took two and a half years for slaves in Texas to get this news that they had been free already. This happened under an all-white-led government, a government where anyone of any other community other than a white community lacked representation. And so, I mean, you know, thank God, though, we have women now that were able to represent us, and I am truly, you know, thankful for that. But what about us? I've heard excuses. I've heard like the "I can'ts," and I understand them. But I just ask you, the next time that you enter your decision rooms, to decide what's best for a community that you don't represent, that you just look around, just look around in the rooms when you're making those decisions. It's a collective decision to disregard systemic oppression. That's all.
Thank you. Next, Philip Ellis.
I'm Philip Ellis. I live at 1119 Patton Street. I'm here to speak in favor of the stormwater ordinance and the credit policy. I moved here in 2013. The family have an office off of Main Street, and I work on water resources, stormwater, flooding, and coastal problems, kind of around the Carolinas. So I also, I kayak a lot. I think I'm the only person that, on a weekly basis, paddles up and down Mud Creek. So I see the effects of the Hendersonville and the county's development, the effects that it's had on the stream banks and the riparian corridor in the heart of our city. And I also frequent the places in western North Carolina that don't have such development. And I can see the drastic change. The channels aren't completely eroded, there's no anthropogenic impacts to create, you know, the hydrologic drought that occurs in those riparian corridors. I don't have much to say, just simply that this is not a new problem that only Hendersonville is facing. Everyone has to. We've gotta pay for it now or later, whether it's threatening infrastructure or the natural environment, and that the only way this problem can be solved is by a governing body seeing the problem as a tragedy of the commons and creating policy rules for everyone to follow so that it's fair for the community. This is one of those issues, rainwater falls, and you don't see the problem on your, like, under your own feet. Your neighbor gets it, or some public land gets it further downstream. So all we can do is entrust the commons to the people that have control over it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Gray Jernigan.
Good evening. My name is Gray Jernigan. I'm speaking on behalf of the nonprofit organization Mountain True, located at 121 Third Avenue West in Hendersonville. I serve as the Southern Regional Director with Mountain True, and we work to protect clean waters, resilient forests, and healthy communities across western North Carolina. I wanted to come here tonight to speak in support of the adoption of the Stormwater Utility Ordinance and Service Charge Credit Policy. Stormwater runoff is the number-one way that pollutants get into our local waterways. That could be petrochemicals running off from parking lots, sediment from construction sites, and disturbed earth, litter from our roadsides, and a host of other contaminants. Managing stormwater is critically important to protecting and improving local water quality. Now Hendersonville has an excellent stormwater management program with great staff. They do a commendable job. But as you know, that carrying out that type of program, employing staff, it costs money. And it's important to have a sustainable funding source to support an effective program. And that's why I'm so pleased to see that the city is considering the establishment of a stormwater utility and fee structure. Additionally, we fully support the credit policy as an incentive for the installation of appropriate stormwater control measures. Managing stormwater in a city the size of Hendersonville is a major challenge, but with your excellent program and staff, it can be done well, and the utility and credit policy that you're considering tonight will make that possible. And so for these reasons, we ask you to approve the Stormwater Utility Ordinance Fee Structure and Credit Policy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Barbara Hughes.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Hughes, 408 North Main Street. Thank you for letting me speak before you tonight. I've been here many, many times over the last 26 years. I'm here to talk about Chalk It Up. When I started, Fred Niehoff was the mayor, but Madam Mayor that's here now was on the council at that time, and several years prior to that. This year, the annual Chalk It Up is July 17. Chalk It Up was born out of the love I have for my own children, the importance of art in my life, and my adopted beloved Hendersonville. In 25 years, I've watched young participants become parents and grandparents who now enter this contest. I had one mother with 10 of her 12 children take the entire east side of the 500 block. There are two mother-and-daughter duos who have drawn in every single contest since the beginning. One family of missionaries who come to work in Appalachia scheduled their trip to coincide with Chalk It Up. The oldest child was awarded a college scholarship based on her Chalk It Up drawing. A military family based in Japan with ties here in Hendersonville always made sure that leave would coincide with the Chalk It Up event. Over the years, we assembled a team of artists that have created huge murals, including one on the tarmac of the Asheville Airport, to commemorate their 50th anniversary. We also did a mural at the opening of the Mission Hospital Cancer Center at their request, as well as two 40-foot murals in front of our historic courthouse. We've provided 90,000 pieces of chalk in 25 years. Chalk It Up is a fun, free, family-friendly event that proclaims Hendersonville as a city with a heart for art. I am blessed and grateful to be a member of this community. Thank you. And I've come bearing gifts.
Thank you for all you do.
Oh, yes, that's the right color for me.
I didn't need that.
Blue for tarials.
Oh, tarials.
There you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Love for chalk artists. Thank you. Okay, thank you, and looking forward to that as always. Okay, now, Mr. Fitch.
Ken Fitch, you've been unmuted.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. Yes, it's an honor to follow Barbara Hughes and all she does for the city. In reference to the agenda item concerning an agreement exchanging certain properties, speaking once again to the fact that the Berkeley Park Ball Field is one of the primary historic properties in the city and the county. It is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is one of the few remaining structures of its kind in the region. This is the home of the legendary Berkeley Spinners Ball Team and was a playing field for generations of young people. The field often provided also a playing field for members of the Negro leagues. And it is on this field where students from segregated teams met to play for the first time. As one veteran said, "Yes, it was the first time, and there was no problem." Significantly, the ball field and the adjacent picnic shelters are among the few remaining structures from the era of the historic Mill Village, where this area was a principal gathering place for that community for a full range of activities, including the annual picnics. This is a very special place, much cherished in memory. I would urge that we not forget to add the provision to the contract, stating that the stadium grandstand be preserved, and any restoration or rehabilitation be undertaken in compliance with the Secretary of Interior's standards and guidance for the treatment of historic properties, which are the same guidelines to which city historic districts and the Main Street District are subject. But perhaps it is important to recognize that when the property was conveyed to the city, an extraordinary gift, the conveyance also included the history that took place there, and that we must honor and respect. Perhaps also, we should recognize that the other properties proposed for future exchange also carry with them a history. The property adjacent to the Rose Edward School was a place often described in Tom Orr's columns, and indeed, he was about to begin a book about that experience just before he left us. And Edward's Park is the location, the scout cabins, where generations have participated in the scouting experience that reshaped their lives. And indeed, we might see such an example in the room tonight, in the presence of our city manager, who was a legendary Eagle Scout in his youth, and still remembered in that part of the state for his accomplishments that he has continued throughout his life. What is especially important about these places is that these were places where young people learned to function in community in ways that the experience would serve them throughout their lives. May the history, the traditions, and values conveyed in their experience of these places continue in the lives of future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Next, we have the consideration of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have added to or removed from the agenda this evening?
Madam Mayor, I just need to make one note, please. We advertised that we had a conditional zoning district amendment for West Avenue Villas, P 21-24-CZD, and also advertised that the local landmark designation for Gray Mill Parking Lot and Common Space, item number H 21-10-LL, was advertised as a public hearing. Those items will not be heard tonight. Those items were pulled from the agenda prior to tonight, but we did advertise, so I just wanted the public to know that anybody that may be watching or in attendance to speak, those items will not be heard.
Okay. They are not listed on the current agenda?
No, ma'am, they're not.
Very good. Anything else on the agenda? Or a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening?
May I ask, do I have to say as amended, or just I move the agenda be...
You just, we just need to do the notification. You can approve as...
Move the agenda be accepted as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda as presented this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Have the agenda. Consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Or if not, a motion to approve those items?
Madam Mayor, move City Council to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Very good. That takes care of several pages. We have a couple of proclamations, and I'm going to move out to the front to do this. The first is a proclamation for Juneteenth. If you can come forward, anyone else that you want to bring forward with you? All right, this is a proclamation for Juneteenth Day 2021. Whereas on September 22, 1862, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring that as of January 1, 1863, all slaves in the rebellious states would be hence forward and forever free. And whereas, it took almost three more years of conflict and loss to bring about the end of the Civil War. And in December 1865, the Thirteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution was nationally ratified, ending the sanctioned institution of slavery. And whereas, the news of freedom disseminated gradually throughout the nation, on June 19, 1865, Union soldiers led by General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and issued General Order Number 3, Announcing Freedom to Some of the Last Slaves in America. And whereas, June 19, or Juneteenth, became nationally recognized as National Freedom Day, commemorating the abolition of sanctioned slavery in the United States. And whereas, on this anniversary each year, organizations and individuals throughout the city of Hendersonville and our nation celebrate African-American heritage, history, freedom, and culture with events and ceremonies that reflect the power of community, family, art, and tradition in the face of oppression. Now therefore, I, Barbara Evold, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, and City Council members, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2021, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Hendersonville, and encourage people to observe Juneteenth as an opportunity to reflect, rejoice, and plan for a brighter future as we continue to address racial injustices in our society today.
Well, I am happy that the city of Hendersonville is honoring Juneteenth. It's a very special day, a day that recognizes the resilience of African-Americans, as well as the celebration of freedom in the United States. I am very proud to be a native of this city, and I'm happy that the city is progressing and we're unifying with cultural events, and I'm extremely happy. Thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you. All right, our second is a resolution to recognize distinguished service to the city of Hendersonville and awarding of service sidearm. And there he is. You're already relaxing.
Yeah.
Okay. This is, whereas, North Carolina General Statute 20-187-2 provides that retiring members of law enforcement agencies may receive, at the time of their retirement, the badge worn or carried by them during their service. And whereas, NCGS 20-187.2 further provides that the governing body of the governing law enforcement agency may, at its discretion, award to a retiring member their service sidearm at a price determined by said such governing body upon determining that the person receiving the weapon is not ineligible to own, possess, or receive a firearm under possession of state or federal law. And whereas, the city of Hendersonville hereby recognizes 25 years of distinguished service as a law enforcement officer by Michael Gerard Vesely for the city of Hendersonville and its residents. And whereas, the city of Hendersonville wishes to recognize Lieutenant Mike Vesely's service in a manner that is customary for persons retiring from distinguished law enforcement service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hendersonville, that the city of Hendersonville hereby awards to Lieutenant Michael Gerard Vesely his service sidearm Glock Model 45, 9mm, serial number VLPU705, for a cost of $1, as determined in the policy for the granting of badges and service sidearms for sworn law enforcement officers as a token of appreciation for his many years of service and dedication to the city of Hendersonville and its residents. Council, you've heard the resolution. Would someone like to move adoption of this?
Move that we adopt this resolution.
Okay. Any discussion? Not those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and this is adopted by the City Council of the City of Hendersonville on the third day of June 2021. Say anything either of you?
25 and a half years with the city. I did six in Hialeah, Florida, before coming up here. My wife of 33 years. I owed all to her. She kept me on track. Essentially, over here, as well.
That's right, yes, sir.
We'll get to it. Okay. All right, we've got our presentations. They're always fun. Public hearings. First of all is our budget adoption. Mr. Connet, I'd like to introduce this.
Mayor Evold, members of City Council, it's my pleasure to present the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. Before I get started, just want to remind the folks listening and the folks in the audience that, following my presentation, the mayor will open a public hearing that will not only allow the public to speak about the budget, but also speak about the proposed stormwater fees that are new this year, as well as our economic development contribution that we make to the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development. So I'll move forward with the budget presentation. It's my pleasure to present the fiscal year 2122 budget. This year's budget totals $45.2 million. The budget is based on our six core priority areas: economic vitality, strong partnerships, sound infrastructure, numerous amenities, great public service, and financial sustainability. The general fund makes up $20.5 million of the total budget and includes all our general government, public safety, and public works operations. The proposed budget includes a 3-cent tax increase. This would increase our current property tax rate from 49 cents to 52 cents per $100 of property evaluation for the fiscal year 2122. That tax rate, the average rate for comparable North Carolina cities is 55 cents per $100. So our proposed rate, again, is 52 cents. We have a chart here showing comparable cities across the state. As you can see, the city of Hendersonville is near the bottom. We do show Asheville as just a comparison, even though they are five or six times larger than any other city on this list. We just wanted to show Asheville as a regional comparison, but their tax base really does not compare at all to the rest of these folks on this list. So you can see, we are very, do very well against our peers in the state of North Carolina, even at the 52 cents. We are near the bottom. What is driving the 3-cent tax increase proposal from staff? The need to improve salaries, benefits to retain, attract, and attract dedicated full-time employees, and the expansive list of critical projects that we've prioritized. I'll go into those in a little more detail. First, let's begin with provides additional compensation and benefits to recruit and retain quality employees. Included in the proposed budget is a 10% cost of living adjustment and merit pay, employment dependent coverage from 50, raising from 50% to 75%, short-term disability coverage, paid family leave policy, and then funds to cover the increased local government retirement. These increases and changes to our benefit are necessary for us to, again, retain and recruit quality employees in our organization. We have seen it become more and more difficult for us to compete in the region against such local governments as the city of Asheville, Buncombe County, and Henderson County. We are actually seeing many of our well-trained, high-quality employees being recruited away from the city of Hendersonville to go work for these other jurisdictions. In addition, the employee-dependent coverage and some of the other benefits are just bringing us to par with these other local governments in our own county, as well as our neighboring counties. Second, we have pays for previously grant-funded firefighters, as well as... Second, we have pays for previously grant-funded firefighters, as well as critically needed do-created positions. The safer grant firefighter salaries are beginning to move from the grant to our City of Hendersonville's responsibility. If you recall, when we received these, or applied for these grants several years ago, we knew that after a three-to-four-year period, we would have to receive, or we'd have to accept, the total responsibility for covering those salaries. If you recall, those who were on the board at that time, we did project at that time that when those salaries, along with some other projects that we had going on, that we would, in, in this current proposed budget, we would have to raise the tax rate by six cents. I'm happy to say that we're only proposing three cents. One, because we have seen our community grow, and secondly, because some of our projects have slowed down a little bit and some things have changed, but instead of a six-six, six cents proposed tax increase, we are only proposing three cents at this time. New positions include two additional police officers, diversity and HR coordinator, which is a priority of the City Council, property maintenance worker, a risk manager to help with our safety program, purchasing administrator to make sure we stay in compliance as we receive more federal and state grants and loans, as well as a part-time fire department administrative assistance, assisted. The third priority in the general fund, or the third driver, is funding critical equipment across departments. We're replacing police, fire, and public vehicles, public works vehicles to keep our fleet in, in great condition and providing the opportunity for our folks to provide great services. We're replacing fleet service equipment, the, the equipment that helps us maintain our fleet and keep them on the, keep things on the road and ready to go when those snowstorms come in the middle of the night. We also are proposing extraction and thermal imaging equipment replacement for the fire department, a bridge replacement in the Patton Park area, and resurfacing the operations parking area. The fourth driver of the proposed tax increase is debt service for current and future capital They include fire engine number three, which was delivered this year, our new police headquarters, which will be open in October, the Seventh Avenue Streetscape project, which is scheduled to start this fall, future city hall and operation renovations. As the police department moves out, there'll be opportunities there to make renovations to better utilize that space. In addition, there are some maintenance items associated with the city hall building, very similar to the maintenance items that we're seeing at the steelwell building at the high school. The buildings are very similar in age, and there's some exterior brickwork that has to be repaired, so that is, will be some of the things built into the renovations. Additional fire apparatus replacement. Your ladder truck is approaching 20 years. More and more often, that truck is out of service because it's needed to be repaired. So we'll, as part of this budget, we will be placing an order, it will take two years to, to build that apparatus. So that's coming forward, as well as replacing your frontline engine one, which takes the majority of our calls day in and day out. Those equipment need to stay at the, up to speed and in good condition. Also, the City Council has designated Edwards and Dogwork Park Development as a priority, and there's many more that you are aware of and are priorities for the City Council. So let me stop right there and see any questions at that point about, before I move on to the Water and Sewer Fund. Any questions about the general fund in general, about anything I've said? I know there'll be some discussion here, but I wanted to stop right there to see before I move to the Water and Sewer Fund.
Any questions? Okay.
All right, I'll move on to the Water and Sewer Fund. The Water and Sewer Fund is our enterprise fund, and it is primarily funded through user charges. The proposed budget is 20.4 million, very similar to the general fund. City Council is on track with their resolution to equalize rates between inside-city and outside-city water customers by the year 2030. As you can see here, the rate differential in FY '20 and '21 was 145%. The rate differential proposed in FY '21-'22 is 140%, so a 5% decrease. In addition, we also provide an inside-city rate to all Henderson County public schools. Your capital projects are your primary driver of the water and sewer rate. The city has a list of future capital projects through FY '26 that total 110 million. This includes your new water intake on the French Broad River, water line and sewer line replacements throughout the system, along King Street, excuse me, along Church Street would be one that comes to mind, as well as others throughout the community to help sustain our growth in, in the county, as well as to have a, a very good water and sewer system. So how do our rates compare to other utilities? The average water bill at 5,000 gallons per month, if you're inside the city, the rate is 22.22 dollars and 37 cents. If you're outside, the rate is 32 dollars and 44 cents. So you can see, compared to utilities with greater than 25,000 accounts, inside rates are substantially lower, outside rates are just a little bit higher. Utilities within 50 miles of us, in both cases, our rates are lower than the utilities within 50 miles. And then all North Carolina utilities, our rates are lower than across the state as an average. So we do very well. We're very competitive in the, in the region and across the state as it relates to our water and sewer. I would remind City Councilmen, I remind the public that it was a priority of the Council based upon a recommendation from the Water and Sewer Advisory Council, and this is, this is even more important compared to the last slide, is the City Council asked or directed staff to ensure that all of our capital projects are financed through the utility rates. We do not charge system development fees. So if you take that into account, it even, is even better, it shows us that we're doing even better, because many of these utilities where we are, are lower than, they also charge system development fees where they charge the developer. So not only are we less than similar utilities or utilities in our region, but we also do not charge developer fees. Two other funds that I'll draw your attention to, the Main Street Fund, proposed budget of 522,366. We're proposing a two-cent tax decrease as we try to bring the Main Street and the Seventh Avenue Funds together. The fiscal '21-'22 rate is 24 cents per $100 of property evaluation, down from 26 cents per $100 valuation. Your Seventh Avenue Fund is proposed at $100,982, proposing no change to the tax rate for that fund, at keeping the tax rate at 17 cents per $100 property valuation. And then finally, the Stormwater Fund, proposing to, to significantly raise revenue in this fund to help us make improvements to infrastructure. The proposed revenue is $1.3 million. No change in residential fees at $5 per month. However, our non-residential fees will move to a based on an impervious surface fee. You've heard a couple of folks speak to this tonight. I will remind everyone that the city's stormwater program is an unfunded state and fairly mandated program aimed at maintaining stormwater infrastructure and improving water quality. And the city conducted a rate study and gathered community information and input to develop an equitable and sustainable utility program. Two points I want to make. We've been talking about this proposed enterprise fund for two years, so we've been out in the community for the last two years. We have worked with the business community, received input from the Partnership for Economic Progress, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, and the City Council has adjusted fees based on feedback they've got from the business community. I will also point out that we just recently had our audit of our stormwater program. Although we've not got the final results, the auditor, basically, as he was leaving, told us it was an exemplary audit, the best that he had seen in western North Carolina. And we feel really good that, we're optimistic that we may be one of four stormwater utilities that receive a notice of compliance. So I'm, hopefully, I'm not jinxing this, Mike, but, but I need to give Mike and Brent Detwiler credit. He was the, basically, we went to the closing meeting, and Brent and I had been waiting for the auditor, and he didn't even come upstairs. He said, "I don't have anything bad to say, so I'm just going back to Asheville." So we were impressed by the work. So just want to say that this, even, it is mandated. Mike has done a great job, and the new revenue will allow us to build on that program to improve water quality in, in western North Carolina, around in Henderson County, and allow us to improve the infrastructure there. And then finally, we'll close with our mission statement, which is the City of Hendersonville is committed to providing quality, efficient services to all citizens, visitors, and businesses through open communication, timely responses, and quality results. That is your proposed budget for fiscal year 2122.
Anyone have questions on anything? Thank you. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes? All right, and we will open this public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding the fiscal year 2122 budget? Anyone like to speak? Is there anyone online raising their hand to speak?
Madam Mayor, Ken Fitch has raised his hand.
Okay, Mr. Fitch?
Ken Fitch, you've been on... Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. One might be tempted to remain silent in the presence of the awesome calculations that Adam, Brian, and others have rendered here, and also perhaps shaken, given the major impact the proposed budget will bring to many. But it is important to acknowledge that although there may be some disagreement with some aspects, it is essential to support and acknowledge the contributions of city staff and employees. It is their service and dedication that convey the high-quality, efficient services cited in the city mission statement. It is these people, fellow members of our community, who directly deliver service to us. As many have been heard to say, these are people who like helping others, and in meeting after meeting, we have recognized their continuing individual and collective special accomplishment and service. So proposals that improve salaries, compensation, and essential benefits, essential benefits for those who directly serve us are well-deserved and affect our quality of life as residents. Yes, it is true that the tax increase will be a major burden for many of us going forward, and with this will come some expectation and sincere hope that you will uphold and uplift the goals and values cited in the budget message and in the resolution of core values and beliefs, especially in view of the severe challenges in the immediate, the immediate future and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Is there anyone else online that wishes to speak?
Madam Mayor, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay. No one, no one in the audience here. All right, we will close that public hearing. Council, discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move City Council to adopt the fiscal year 2021-22 budget ordinance, FY '22 Capital Reserve Fund ordinance, Capital Improvement Plan Resolution of Intent, Capital Project Ordinances 21017, 21018, 21019, and 21020, and reimbursement resolution for CPO number 21017, 21018, 21019 as presented.
Is, is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of approving the motion for the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Motion passes, the budget is adopted. Thank you, staff, for all the work that went into it.
I think we should, special thanks to legendary Eagle Scout city manager, John Connet, for the presentation.
I'm so glad we know that.
So, thank you, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Brian Polly and Adam Moore and the rest of our team. They worked very hard on this budget, and I couldn't do it without them, so.
I just wanted to bring up the legendary.[1534.04][1534.04](LAUGHING). We know who does all the work.
Okay. Our next public hearing is an annexation public hearing for Interfaith Assistance Ministry, Mr. Hallway.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The city has received a petition from Interfaith Assistance Ministry for a contiguous annexation of PIN number 9579-35-2187, which is located on Jack Street and is approximately .3 acres. There are maps in the agenda package identifying the location. On May 6th, you accepted the city clerk's certificate of sufficiency for the petition and set today as the date for the public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
Okay, we will open this public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to comment on the annexation? Anyone who wishes? Is there anyone online who wishes to comment?
No one has raised their hands, Mayor.
Okay. All right, well, we'll close that public hearing. Council, discussion or a motion?
I'll do this one.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I move Council to adopt an ordinance of the City of Hendersonville City Council to extend the corporate limits of the city as a continuous annexation to annex that property owned by Interfaith Assistance Ministries identified as PIN 9579-352187, finding that the standards established by North Carolina General Statute 168.3 have been satisfied and that the annexation is in the best interest of the city.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the annexation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion passes, and IAM can move ahead with their plans there. Thank you. Another annexation, public hearing for Oak Preserve, P2112-A-N-X. Mr. Hallway again.
Good evening again. We have received a petition, in this case from Mr. Troy Lee, managing member of OP Management LLC, for the non-contiguous annexation of parcel PIN number 9577883870, located at 2201 Old Spartanburg Road. It is a 5.6 acre lot, and you will be hearing from Matt up next, a rezoning for the proposed lot. It is outside of our ETJ, just off of Upward Road, so we'll be hearing that rezoning next for a duplex development on this parcel, but this is the annexation component. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this proposed non-contiguous annexation? Is there anyone seeking recognition online to speak?
Madam Mayor, no one has raised their hand online.
All right, we will close this public hearing. Council?
I can do this one. Madam Mayor, I move Council to adopt an ordinance of the City of Hendersonville City Council to extend the corporate limits of the city as a satellite annexation, annexing the... to extend the corporate limits of the city as a satellite annexation, annexing the non-contiguous parcel identified as PIN 9577883870, finding that the standards established by the North Carolina General Statute 160A-58.1 have been satisfied and that the annexation is in the best interest of the city.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of this annexation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it, motion passes and we have annexed that and now we have to do the rezoning.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Good to see you this evening. I brought my water with me this time. Choked up again. Tonight, I'm presenting an application for conditional rezoning from Mr. Troy Lee of TMFL Consultants and OP Management for the same parcel at 2201 Spartanburg Road. It is 5.6 acres, incorrect acreage is on there, thought that had been updated. It is for 15 duplexes, so 30 units total. This is, so all two-family, it would be rezoned from R1 Residential, which is a county zoning, to PRD in the city. A neighborhood compatibility meeting was held on April 5th. All the members that were there were from Sharon's Crossing subdivision, which is adjacent to the site, and they covered a number of topics, but it mainly revolved around impacts to that subdivision. When we take a look at the subject property, we see the existing zoning is all county, all around it. So as was mentioned, this would be a satellite annexation, so all the zoning currently is county and it's R1 on the site and to the south and east, and then there's community commercial along Upward Road and that commercial district and those uses, the back of those properties abuts this property. The proposed zoning would be PRD, so residential to residential. The existing land uses, again, to the south and east are residential, to the north is the commercial, there's currently only one commercial use there, it's Rex's Gun Shop and Gun Range, but there is a potential for additional commercial development to the north of this property. When we take a look at the future land use map, there's actually two future land use maps that are overlaid. You have the county's future land use map and the city's that both cover this particular property. The county's future land use designation is community service center on the triangle portion, the pointed portion of the lot, as that is a node around extending out from Spartanburg Highway and Upward Road. And the rest of that portion of the property is designated as urban service area under the county. For the city, the property itself is designated as neighborhood activity center and then across to the north is high-intensity neighborhood. So taking a look at the neighborhood activity center, that designation is intended to be dense development around a node, in this case, again, it's Spartanburg Highway, the intersection of Spartanburg Highway and Upward Road. This is a little bit tucked away from that particular intersection, but you will see that it does provide some density and does help to further this goal. There are additional goals in the comprehensive plan from our natural and environmental resources chapter. It calls for clustered development where the development on the site is kind of tucked together where, while the rest of the site remains undeveloped, and in this case, they're achieving that and preserving a pretty densely forested area, which I'll provide some pictures here in a minute. And then looking at Chapter 2, population and housing, there's a goal to provide a wide range of housing. As of 2009 in our comprehensive plan, only 1.6% of the housing in Hendersonville were two-family duplexes, so very small percentage, and so this would help to address and help that diversification of housing types. Taking a look at the site, the main thing that stands out, these pictures are from early spring, this large number of hardwood trees, as well as some evergreen trees, very mature on the site, many of which are proposed to be preserved, some of which are called for to be removed. In the center, you do see, right at the center top, you see the adjacent Sharon's Crossing neighborhood and how that relates to this site. In the very center, you see Rex's Gun Shop and Gun Range. There's actually a gap in the vegetation and you can clearly see that commercial use. To the right center, there's a spring on the site and that is located in this point near the back of the property in the densely wooded area. That's shown pretty well in the bottom-left picture, you see how dense the forest is there and all of that would be preserved. And then coming back up to Spartanburg, Old Spartanburg Highway and looking at the site, really the center of the site is a meadow and that's where most of the development will take place. And then along Spartanburg Highway, there's a nice row of mature hardwood trees that are slated for preservation. That's the bottom-right picture. Taking a look at the site plan, you can see here, you can see the configuration of the 30 units, the 15 duplexes, along a private drive, which is a cul-de-sac. You can see the proposal for a nature trail going around the perimeter. You see the trees that have been marked for preservation and the open space clearly identified there and where it accesses Old Spartanburg Road. There's also a stormwater management area shown there on the site as well. Taking a look at the utility plan, the, and open space area, you can see it, what was calculated as open space is shown there in purple. This shows a sewer extension going out to the back of the property. The upper right screenshot shows the utilities in the area. It's my understanding that this is actually not going to be going, the sewer will not be going out the back of the property, they're going to go out towards Old Spartanburg Road and connect across the street. And so this is, this will be finalized at final site plan. Doesn't really impact the decision before you tonight, but that's my understanding that there's been some potential changes on the utility connections. Taking a look at the tree survey, you see a little more detail about the trees slated for preservation and those that are slated to be removed. You've got 37 trees that are, at this time, proposed to be removed and 103 trees that would remain. 61 of those are hardwood trees and 40 are ponds. Those numbers don't quite add up, but they're close. So that's the information that is provided on the tree survey there. Staff did not have any specific recommendations for this proposal. However, the tree board did make a recommendation at their meeting, just to protect, the trees that are slated for preservation need to be protected in accordance with zoning ordinance for tree protection. And essentially that is, as you guys know, for every one inch of diameter at breast height, there would be one foot of a protection zone around the trunk of the tree and that's protected with barriers during construction. Planning Board upheld or carried forward the recommendation from the tree board. That was their first condition that they recommended for you at their meeting. The second condition that they recommended was that the developer will work with staff to extend the driveways to increase parking for each unit, and I'll come back to that. The third recommended condition was for a barrier along the southern property, which is the Sharon's Crossing side, that they increase that buffer with fencing, berms or additional landscaping. And then fourth was additional visitor parking and cluster mailbox parking to be added. Both number two and number four were in response to a healthy conversation around parking. So from the site plan, there are no garages proposed at this time, and so all the parking would occur in the driveways and essentially there would be enough parking really to accommodate the occupants for each of these units. With the number of driveways along this private drive, there would not be, there's not a lot of space for on-street parking. So the idea is if there were guests coming, would it create an issue without any additional parking? And so the idea of extending the driveways was one solution to this parking issue that was put forward, along with adding some additional visitor parking. But overall, the issue broadly was related to parking and so we feel that we can work with the developer through the final site plan to address those issues through a variety of means, such as possibly these. We do understand that there could be trade-offs. So if we extend driveways, there could be some additional tree loss, and so we would like to look at those trade-offs in coming up with a final site plan that meets the intent of any conditions that are approved by you tonight. And so this was recommended unanimously by the planning board and I'll leave that for your consideration tonight. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I have one on what you just discussed. The extension of driveways obviously means that the townhouses have to be further from the road, or the driveway, I mean, not the driveway, but the street coming in, right?
That would be correct. They would be pushed further back, right?
Right, and so you just mentioned us, that might mean that some of the preserved trees would be taken out in order to push those back. Was there ever discussion at all about taking any of the areas between the townhouses and just making those like a place for a visitor to park?
It was discussed. The most accommodating space that was allowed for with that configuration, there's a little pod-shaped, that was identified as a potential site for additional parking and the cluster mailbox location.
So it's not drawn on here, but that is something they're planning to do?
Yeah, and the developer has a presentation and they've reviewed these conditions in anticipation for you tonight, so it might be best to let them kind of address those conditions and it might relieve some of these concerns or might bring up other questions and I'm happy to answer those at that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have some questions, but I think, are we going to be talking to the developer?
Yes, I was going to have the developer do a presentation next.
Okay.
Okay, we don't have any more questions here?
Madam Mayor, I do have one. Just to point out, R1 for the county, and I was kind of texting with Lou here, if you would give us the maximum density allowed under certain conditions in the county's R1, I hate to go and just drastically change something and we're not.
Yeah, no, go for it.
So R1 allows between four and 12 units per acre, based on, there's some conditions to gain the additional levels of density, but it allows up to 12 units per acre and I think they're at about six units per acre. Yeah, so this development is currently proposing six units per acre, which in theory would be within the parameters of the R1. Sony?
That does concern me when Lou solved that. Thanks, Lou.
All right.
Sorry, wasn't texting, I was just checking the math there, sorry. So we should have Austin and potentially Troy, you got both of them?
Yeah, we have both of them here.
Okay. Austin, this is his presentation, if you want to put Austin up first.
And Austin, if you just say next slide, I'll advance the slide for you.
Okay.
Sure, sure. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you, everybody, for meeting tonight and addressing this with us. We're very excited to be here. I just wanted to kind of go over our analysis of kind of these recommendations from the planning board and kind of where we stand and make that clear for everybody, what the path is moving forward. And so if we can go ahead and go to the next slide, I'd like to show, these were the comments, you know, from our last meeting with the planning board. And as you can see, the first comment is addressing, it's in regards to the trees and preservation, so that's a very important part of this whole thing. And I know for Troy, it's important, the place is called Oak Preserve for a reason and we want to make sure, there's so many cool trees with great character and the goal is to preserve as many as we can and still incorporate a nice sound design that's functional and practical. So basically, in regards to trees and preservation, everything will be protected in accordance with the, you know, Section 154C and that will not be an issue moving forward. And moving on to the next, number two, you know, the next concern was that about the driveways. You know, we were, we want to make sure that this place is functional, so from the first presentation, we did make sure there was enough room in the driveways that, the goal was to keep people from hanging out into and over the sidewalk. You know, when you think if I was wanting to live in a subdivision, I'd want to be able to utilize the amenities and, you know, not be inconvenient. So there's definitely a fine line between making something that's approvable and making something that's functional. So we definitely want it to be as functional as possible. And given the style of unit that Troy is wanting to put here, we've done some analysis and we do believe we can accommodate additional parking. And it is kind of on a case-by-case basis per unit. There are a couple that are right up against the setback line and those are just going to have to be marketed towards a different clientele, someone maybe that has less people or, you know, or something along those lines. And that'll be up to the property manager down the road or, you know, or a client. And so, but anyways, you know, there's a few options, you know, whether it be, if there's an area where it's too difficult to extend the driveway further back, maybe because you end up in a cluster of trees we were trying to preserve, maybe there's an alternative in regards to finding a way to incorporate, you know, a garage potentially into the footprint. But so, but all of that, all that is just to say that I know that Troy is very willing to work with the city, willing to work with the neighbors and we just want to make this a success. So that moves on to number three, about the barriers on the south of the property. In our last meeting, you know, Troy was asked if that was something he'd be willing to assist with. And I know that after being out there and through the photos that we just saw as well, there is a large fence on that portion of the property. However, anywhere that there isn't a fence, you know, Mr. Lee has made it clear he'd be willing to add on to it and keep it contiguous, made with the same materials and same style, you know, so he's making sure, he wants to be a good neighbor and I think that shows through his actions thus far and I'm excited to see what they can come up with. Moving on to the fourth recommendation here, it was in regards to visitor parking and a cluster mailbox. That is something that we absolutely can provide. There's a good spot to put it and we want to make sure that it makes sense where it's at for the flow of the whole place and that, you know, we, the good news is where we would put it, we won't be, you know, messing with any trees that were intended to be preserved. So I think from, you know, from step one, that's a good thing and it looks like we'll be able to incorporate a few spaces, along with a handicap space and make sure that everybody can have somewhere to pull off to get their mail or if a guest needs somewhere to park, that that is possible. So moving on to the next slide, you know, really, it's really just the answers that I just provided, but I just wanted to go ahead and go over that with you guys to make it clear. But I'd also like to take a second to, after this analysis, kind of break down the differences and what it means. So through a very, you know, through going through this and trying to, you know, go through an AutoCAD and come up with an idea of what the adverse effect would be on pushing homes back, ultimately, it looks like if, with the balance of a couple of trees being taken away and a couple more being preserved that were going to be removed, it would look, it looks at now to be that there would be six additional trees that were originally slated to be preserved would have to be removed for, you know, to make it work. So all that's to say, I did talk with Troy and, you know, it sounds like he's willing, if we've got a big cluster of trees somewhere and it just doesn't make sense on this unit, we can work around that, find a way to make it work by shortening the driveway or however it be, whatever the solution may be, if it's a built-in garage into the footprint, that's something that we can handle and would be willing and more than happy to work with with the planning department to make sure we meet all of those conditions. And then for the next, on the next slide- all of those conditions. Um, and then for the next, uh, on the next slide, I believe, you know, it's basically just a conclusion of that, you know, the difference of the six trees, the additional trees is important to note. But I also want to say and make a note about, um, the sewer. Originally, this is a little bit tricky to find a place to connect sewer, uh, if trying to avoid private easements, sometimes that can get a little bit tricky. And, um, I believe, after an analysis of the depth of the manhole across the street at Bell Avenue, that we will be able to gravity back towards that system, and therefore, you know, we weren't going to preserve those trees that would have been in the easement back there, because, you know, you can't have trees in the easement for sewer. So there was 19 trees that were going to have to get removed back there, and it appears those no longer will need to be removed. So we'll be able to save 19 additional trees in the back. And so that's good news, too. Um, but all in all, um, I'm, I'm happy and willing to answer any questions, but, um, but thank you for, for giving us time to speak today.
Okay. Any questions?
Hi, Dick. What is the, um, what are, what is the square, square footage of each unit?
Um, so, so the square footage of, of each unit, um, on that site plan that you're seeing in front of you, um, is, um, and bear with me, I'm going to pull this up. Um, we've got, each one's broken into, you know, split down the middle to represent both floors there, and I want to, I'm going to go ahead and pull up my drawings so I can make sure I don't say it wrong, so bear with me.
I believe it's about 2,000 square feet, just on.
Yeah, it is. It's roughly, yeah, right at 2,000 square.
Nineteen ninety-two.
That's per unit or per structure?
Per unit.
So that's like two to three bedrooms, is that?
It's, uh, they're supposed to be four-bedroom units.
Yeah, yeah. Four bedrooms, and it's 1,950 square feet per unit. That's correct.
That's an interesting concept. So, and then for each unit, there is proposed to be two parking spots, if you extend the parking.
Uh, current, without the extension, two parking spots, larger than, so we have a nine by 18 is what we use for, uh, parking spot for our, um, required parking spaces in our zoning ordinance. And, um, I don't know the exact dimensions. I know it is larger than that. Uh, uh, Austin, you can speak to the exact dimensions, but I know you, you had proposed that it be a little bit larger than a typical parking space, as, as is, without any extension.
That, that's correct. Yeah, the way, the way to scale that it is now, the goal was in the, that in those driveways, you could park, um, four cars, you know, assuming a car is in a normal parking space, if we do a design, it's going to be nine feet wide, 18 feet deep. And so we, our goal was to provide enough space on average for, you know, up to four cars to park in the, in the, in the driveway where possible. However, we didn't want to have them in the way of the sidewalk necessarily. So that would be, it would inhibit the use of the sidewalk. So with an extension, you'd be looking at up to 36-foot driveway, so you would have 18 space for, you know, two cars side by side and two right behind them, if, you know, so, so that's the goal. And then depending on what happens, if there was to be a garage to help in certain cases, then that would be a good way to also, um, compensate for that, that additional space.
So to clarify, the current site plan, you would be able to park four cars per unit, but you would be extending into the sidewalk?
That's correct.
So two cars side by side, two cars behind those, basically going to the edge of pavement out of the street, but blocking the sidewalk.
Right, that's correct. So, or, or, after an analysis, it seems like 36 feet deep is a good, good depth, where it'd be able to get four cars in there, and, you know, comfortably, I mean, you know, 18 feet is the depth on an average space, but there's a lot of cars that are shorter than that, uh, by far, too. So, you know, it's, uh, it's the best we could try to do to, to, to try to fit the right amount of spaces, and also not get encroached into the setbacks with the units.
I'll ask him, right, not you. So, um, sorry.
Go ahead.
Were you finished?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, good evening. Uh, this is Jerry Smith talking. Um, so can somebody park on the street? Or would that, is that going to completely block traffic?
So parking on the street wouldn't completely block traffic, um, but you run into the issue of, you know, essentially, this is a, if it's a 20-foot wide paved street, you know, you can pull off the side, you could park there. You could find a place to park. If, if people are doing it all over the place, it could be an issue, but the, the first thing I think of is fire safety. Um, you know, need to make sure that if any time there would need to be a fire truck in there, the biggest rig they got needs to be able to make it in that place. So, you know, this wasn't designed to, um, for the street parking based on, um, you know, the shape. You know, the shape of this lot, the way it narrows down into a point like that, you know, you slowly lose space. There's not a whole lot of extra room for creativity to a degree. So if we make that road wider, then those homes, everything, then the driveways are going to have to be even deeper. And so that's kind of, it was a, a balance that we were trying to, 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 to fix, you know. And so to answer your question, you could park a car on the side of that street, and someone could get around you. I don't know that that's ideal, and I don't know that that's what, um, you know, the owner would want. But, um, but this is going to be a 20-foot wide paved road.
So, at this time, this is not in the packet, you're not requesting us to make that street no parking? Right?
Uh, can you repeat? I'm sorry, can you repeat that for me?
It's a private drive, too, so.
Oh, so this road is not being dedicated to the city?
It's not being dedicated.
Never mind that.
No, that is correct. Yeah, it will be private.
Other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
All right. We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak about the conditional rezoning for oak preserve? No one in the room? Is there anyone online?
Ken Fitch has raised his hand.
Okay, Mr. Fitch?
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. There are two issues here, compatibility and safety. These are issues which will confront us with increasing frequency and proposals for many projects in the future. The pro, proposal here is for an intensive development of two-story duplex rental apartments. Proximity and density become flashpoints in consideration. It is clear that the buffering elements should be a major requirement to establish compatibility. The planning board and the tree board have carefully reviewed the plans and have suggested conditions that should be included and should be specifically stated if the project were to move forward, and to which the developer does appear to agree. Uh, the presence of the mature trees becomes important when new two-story buildings are in proximity. So preservation of the existing tall trees becomes valuable in many respects, and realistically would be a benefit to both developments, especially in compliance with section 15 dash four of the zoning ordinance. Um, in the planning board review, it did become evident that there were gaps in the existing fencing and tree buffering, so the condition to provide for a consistent buffer along the southern boundary would be desirable that is in direct proximity to the adjacent development. Given the density of the units on this small piece of property, narrow roadway, uh, becomes an issue because of the parking, as, as is being discussed. And the two proposal conditions to address that issue become absolutely necessary to ensure the safety of residents and visitors, as well as to ensure emergency access. Clearly, two cars on, parked on the street at the same time would create a very dangerous situation. So one does support the planning board and tree board recommended conditions, uh, as stated, and to which the developer does seem to, uh, agree, to, to make this viable and safe and compatible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Is there anyone else seeking recognition?
No one else has raised their hand, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We will close that public hearing. Counsel, discussion or a motion?
It's so long.
It's a long one.
Jerry should do this. He's good with these.
I'm happy to do it. I'll make sure I've got it.
I think the conditions are all listed.
Uh, it is on the next page. Um, Angie, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Yeah. With regard to the conditions, I only have to cite one of them, correct? I don't have to do all of them?
No, sir. Um, this is a new format, uh, that planning department might like to comment on, but no, sir. This is in lieu of the separate list of uses and conditions, so you would need to read all of, all of the conditions.
On the back page.
Oh, on the back, yes. One or more of those.
Okay, so at least one?
At one or, yes, sir. One or more.
Or do I need to read all of them?
If, whichever ones you feel like apply, yes.
Got you. Yeah, I know I need to read all these.
Okay, sorry. I misunderstood.
Can Jerry, if I may just throw one thing in before you?
Yes, sir.
If in fact you are, uh, making the motion to recommend it, I would like, on the list of, of choices in the back, that the proposed use is compatible. I would like that included, if I may. Thank you.
Number three.
Yes, sir.
Let's just read them all. Let's just read them all. Okay, here we go. Madam Mayor,
I'm with City Council, adopting ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property from county R1 zoning to PRD CZD, Planned Residential Development Conditional Zoning District, based on the site plan submitted by the applicant and subject to the following. Permitted uses shall include residential dwellings to family. Conditions that shall be satisfied prior to final site plan approval include: Trees slated for preservation as shown on the site plan must be protected in accordance with section 15-4C of the zoning code prior to construction, and the developer shall work with staff to extend the driveways to increase parking for each unit, and barriers along the southern property line shall be supplemented with fencing, berms, and/or additional landscaping, and visitor parking and cluster mailbox parking shall be added. Finding that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map, and that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The development will provide additional housing while clustering development and preserving existing tree canopy. The development will provide additional housing options within the city, definitely, and the proposed use is compatible with the area.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of this rezoning say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have, the motion carries, and, uh, that property has been rezoned. Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
Um, and I'd also like to thank all the staff on, on how you have worked our agendas. These are much easier, they weren't hard to read before, but they're certainly easier to read and understand now, so thank you very much.
Okay. Very good. Onto new business. Uh, resolution approving the city of Hendersonville core values and beliefs. Mr. Connick?
Mayor Volker, Mayor of the City Council, it's my pleasure to present the core values and beliefs. I will try to quickly go through this, but I think it's important for the folks in the room and the folks on our Zoom call to see, um, the core values and beliefs that you'll be adopting. Uh, and I'll just kind of do this. Uh, the city believes municipal government should be nonpartisan. Political affiliations are not productive to solving problems in local communities. City leaders and staff must lead by example and meet regularly with people who have different points of view. The city leaders and staff must maintain an awareness of local, state, and national political trends, but must lead the city in a manner that serves all community members. Your second value, the city Hendersonville values open, transparent communication and trust with the community and each other. The city will openly communicate with the public and each other to ensure information about services, policies, programs are available. Uh, the city will build trust through ethical and transparent leadership. The city will share information and solicit feedback prior to the implementation of new programs and policies. The city will be open to concerns, comments from all stakeholders, and will ensure the community can easily speak to leaders without fear of retribution and embarrassment. The city of Hendersonville believes community members expect services to be delivered at a high level. The city will deliver services at a high level to make people feel their taxes and fees are being used effectively and to encourage others to live in our community. The city will deliver services in a manner that ensures the safety of the community. The city will deliver services in a manner that limits the disruption of our community members' daily lives to the greatest extent possible. The city of Hendersonville values all community members through promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion. The city must evaluate all laws, policies, and rules to ensure that they can be implemented and enforced in a fair and equitable manner. The city must evaluate all current and future programs, projects, or initiatives to ensure they build a culture where differences are valued. The city must ensure that leaders and staff consistently work to build trust and positive relationships throughout our community. The city believes environmental sustainability is critical to preserving the community for future generations. The city will evaluate the environmental sustainability of all projects and programs while maintaining a solid relationship with the residential and business community. The city believes that it's our responsibility to protect all natural, all of our natural resources and the environment through the implementation of sustainable and responsible projects. The city must lead by example by evaluating all city operations to ensure they protect or repair the natural environment or environmentally sustainable. And the city will prioritize protection of existing tree canopy and development of green spaces and parks. The city of Hendersonville values its employees and must support them to ensure the provision of high-quality services to its residents. The city must provide growth opportunities to employees and educational tools to allow them to grow in their roles and responsibilities. The city must respect and pay employees fairly and competitively, and the city must support employees by providing a safe and hazard-free workplace. The city of Hendersonville believes that it must pursue and provide opportunity for responsible growth. The city will establish and maintain policies and programs that encourage economic opportunity and help grow small business and entrepreneurship. The city will work with our community to provide educational opportunities about growth and its impact on economic vitality and quality of service. The city will encourage responsible growth that provides opportunities for success to all segments of our community. And the city will make efforts to generate affordable housing options and reduce the impacts of the high cost of living within our community. The city will prioritize the protection of existing residential neighborhood, neighborhoods while making growth decisions. And I believe this is the final one. The city of Hendersonville values the lives of all community members and must protect them through collective action. Our goal is to make the lives of all residents better through collective action. The city recognizes the sanctity of each person's life. The city must be open to change priorities and policies as circumstances change in the world around us. Those are your proposed core values and beliefs developed by this city council. The staff's proposal is that those beliefs will be published on our website, as well as placed around, um, our organization in the city building so that they are clear and open, that they will be evaluated on a regular basis, at least, at least, um, at every, uh, council, um, election, if not annually.
Any questions? Comments?
Well, I'd like to say that I like it. I mean, I appreciate all of our, well, first of all, all of the staff's work, and, I don't know, all of the staff's work in, uh, putting it together. But I just appreciate all of our work, because we all sat and talked a lot about putting it together. I like it.
Okay. Would you like to move to approve this?
I'm, I'm fine if nobody else wants to.
I'll do it, Jerry. I move the city council adopt the resolution to approve the city of Hendersonville's core values and beliefs as presented.
Okay. Is there any? Is there any further discussion? Comments? Those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, we have it. Thank you. Another resolution, this approving Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee Charter and Rules of Procedure.
Mayor Volks, Members of City Council, we have presented your proposed bylaws and rules of procedure, or school, yeah, charter and rules of procedure for your Diversity and Inclusion Committee. It includes lots of great information on how the meeting should be run and organized and the purpose for the committee. One question for the city council, just as clarification, and I'll remind you that the current makeup of the committee is seven at-large members and then two city council members. That may be something that this group wants to, the city council wants to discuss. Make sure that membership is appropriate. If you want that many members, the proposal, again, is seven at-large at the council and ultimately a point, and then two city council members. So that would be a decision point for that council that that is accurate, and that's how you would like for that board to be authorized.
Okay, any thoughts on the number? Are you satisfied with?
I would personally suggest that it have one council member, and it's not even that. I would say that the mayor would always have the seat. I would rather see council not dilute the makeup of the seven by having two members on it.
Is it seven with two of those being council members, or seven plus two council members?
Seven plus two.
Seven plus two.
Seven plus two.
So it's the nine.
Seven plus two.
I would still go with, I would prefer one council member on it. I just don't want a heavy, even two's not heavy, but to me, having one council member there, and to me, that should be technically the mayor, my two cents. And I've sat on the diversity committee since it started, and...
I'd just say, I just like odd numbers. I mean, I don't know what might come up, but just odd numbers make it weird.
The city council liaison wouldn't be voting, so you'd still have an odd number voting.
Yeah.
Okay, good point.
They're more just facilitating.
And anybody can go watch, whether you're on the committee or not, anybody can go.
My only thought for there being two was that if we were appointing, even if it was the mayor or someone else, that depending on how often they meet, then you wouldn't both have to be there at the same time. You guys could alternate being there, or just that way one of us is always there? Because sometimes we all get busy.
And the mayor could appoint someone to go in her place. And I'm not going to jump up and down over it. I just, I would like to see it as many at-large members as possible. And I do think it should...
Do you think there should be more than seven?
No, seven or nine, I don't care either one there.
Okay.
Because there are always going to be somebody, you know, not there that has something come up. But my point was just, I didn't really see, after sitting in all of it, the need for two council members there. But that's just my opinion after watching it. But I do always believe that the mayor should have the seat there. I think it's that important, so.
I agree with Jeff, just because, you know, these are advisory boards, and I, I mean, I think on all of our other boards, there's one council person. And I think the best way to actually hear from the public is to not us always be there, you know, and in such large quantities. And so I think that the mayor and Jeff have done a fabulous job already in bringing folks together, and I think this is a step, another step forward, and then, but I, I would like to see just one of us be heading...
Going in.
Mike was freaking out.
Mine turned red and then it turned green.
Yeah, mine was freaking out. Wanted to point out, too, that diversity is a lot more than, than just black and white and brown. I mean, it's, so the more people are at the table representing all of the people that need to be represented, the less of them that are elected officials, I think there's, there's a better performance there.
I think we could go to nine people if we wanted to. A lot of applications came in, and you get more people from different backgrounds on there, the better. I wouldn't go any more than nine because then it becomes unmanageable as far as a group of people.
So, so what I'm hearing is you could go to eight? Well, are you saying, instead of having eight at-large and the mayor, go to nine plus the mayors?
Nine plus the mayor. Because there'd be nine, an odd number voting.
But technically, the mayor is...
She's just the liaison.
She's just liaison, she's not a voting member.
Right.
The mayor is not the voting, a voting member. And Jeff, what do you think about if we limit it to one member of council, but we go ahead and select an alternate so that the mayor's not wondering, like, who's going to replace me? Someone might like to be the alternate.
Like the vice mayor.
I say then, why don't you go pro temp?
I wasn't trying to choose myself, I'm just saying.
But I mean, we can't just name the people, we don't know who it'll be.
Obvious position.
Yeah, so it would be mayor, mayor pro temp.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
As an alternate. While there may be a lot of people interested now, that is a lot of board members. I've been on boards where there's a lot of board members, and it sometimes is more stressful. And so I like the original number and just having the mayor and an alternate, so.
Yeah, and I will go back to our, I'm not sure it's a written policy, but certainly it's a practice policy, which is if we put two more people, that prohibits those two people from serving on another committee that they might want to serve on? I just want to point that out. Or we might want them to serve on later on, so, but I, you know...
Might I suggest seven plus the mayor to begin with? You can, councils in the future can always expand.
Add more people?
Yes. With the mayor and pro temp being the, mayor pro temp being the two. When they're needed, one or, one or other, yeah. Do we need to reword something in there for that? Don't make me try to say it again.
So what I've heard is that the membership will be, consist of seven members plus the mayor, and the mayor pro temp will serve as the alternate if the mayor cannot attend.
Yes.
Adam Attorney, you okay with that?
Well, mayor and mayor pro temp alternate being liaisons.
Okay, liaison.
Still not voting, still not counting for quorum. Yes.
Can we just say as amended, or do we need to say all of that in the motion?
As amended.
We probably have to word that.
The motion that we would have, do we need to include as amended? Because I don't see that the motion really has the makeup of the committee in it.
Well, that's in the charter.
But it's...
Right, so I would, I would move that you adopt it with the following amendments.
And then we state it.
And state them, yes. So move city council adopt the resolution approving the Diversity and Inclusion Committee Charter and Rules of Procedure with the following amendments, and then list the amendments.
Okay, I move that the city council adopt the resolution approving the Diversity and Inclusion Committee Charter and Rules of Procedures as present, as amended with seven, at, seven voting members, and the mayor and the mayor pro temp as alternate.
For liaison.
For liaison, non-voting.
Okay.
Did I butcher that, or is it okay?
It clarified.
I think the intent is there. We can base, we can, we will come up with the verbiage to carry out that intent.
Good. All right, is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the resolution for our new committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and one step further. Now, a joint resolution by the Hendersonville City Council and Henderson County Board of Education to enter into an agreement exchanging certain properties.
Make that a certain product, ooh.
Okay.
Mayor Volks, Members of City Council, staff has prepared a joint resolution between the city council and the Henderson County School Board, or excuse me, Henderson County Board of Education, to exchange from the city 25 acres of Berkeley Park for Ed, a portion of Edwards Park, the former athletic field at the school administration office, and additional compensation of $100,000. The resolution stipulates several items that have been negotiated throughout this process, and staff presents it to you for your consideration. This will basically, it's a joint resolution, so if the council approves it, it will, it will go to the Board of Education. If they adopt it, then we'll begin the process of transfer on the property.
Questions?
Yes. This is the resolution, there is ultimately a contract, which is not this.
Yes, there will ultimately be an agreement drafted from this resolution, yes.
And that is the true moment that we, that transfer takes place.
That's right.
When do you think that will happen?
So my guess is that the school board does not meet until June 30th, but then it's, we've been waiting on some surveys. I would expect at your August meeting, maybe, about your August meeting, yes, that all the legal work will be worked through.
Yes, and Madam Mayor, I'd like to point out there is a blank in there that needs to be filled in, unless you want to just leave it up to negotiation. The green, public greenway, a minimum of X feet in width.
A greenway has to be 10 feet wide, and it has to have a two-foot buffer to be called a greenway. So is that what we should put in there?
I'm consulting the favor of city engineer.
Good thing you're the favorite.
20 feet enough, is that for your...
To maintain it?
Yeah.
Not to build a new one, right? The one that's in, that's coming in.
It would, it would be going around.
I'd say at least 30 feet to, to maintain it.
How much?
30.
30.
And it says minimum, so it'll be negotiated, so 30 feet. Thank you.
So do we need to say that in the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I also ask one other question, just about Mr. Fitch's comments about keeping the ball field and the historical significance, and if they did any restoration to it or renovations? I mean, they would have to follow any sort of historic preservation because it's on the National Registry of Historic Places, isn't it?
And I think if we want to add it to the contract, we can. I know it's not necessarily in here.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean it's gone. Yeah, because we can, this is not the contract.
Right.
So we can add it to the contract if we would like.
Okay, it doesn't hurt to put it in there.
And it's on the National Regis...
It's historic, baseball field. Right, and I kind of figured if it's on the registry, you already have to follow the rules, it's not...
But I, I agree that, I do think we need to come to an agreement if they're going to do that because just working at a school, every school's its own little kingdom. If, if, if the requirement is to keep it that way, then the school system should be aware of that so that they know that, that with regard to that field, there may need to be some oversight by the school board, not school board, the superintendent, with regard to anything done that's potentially not in accordance with that, whatever the National Registry requires.
Yeah, and I don't want us to get us in the weeds on that right now, but I just wanted to make sure that it was addressed since it was brought up.
I would as well, but I don't think we need to add it to this resolution.
No.
We can talk about that when it gets to the contract. Um, never mind.
Other questions? Someone could frame a motion? That includes the, filling that blank?
I'll do it. I move that city council adopt the joint resolution authorizing the city manager, city attorney, school superintendent, and school board attorney to negotiate and develop an exchange agreement between the city of Hendersonville and Henderson County Board of Education, subject to the amendment that the greenway, or the minimum of width of 30 feet with regard to the perimeter of the 25 acres be held for a easement to build a public greenway.
Any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the joint resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay. Yeah, moving ahead. Stormwater utility ordinance and credit policy, all right.
We'll see how entertaining this one is. Madam Mayor, Members of Council, presented tonight is the stormwater utility ordinance and the stormwater service charge credit policy that were presented to you at the workshop, I believe, in February for your feedback. And so the only amendments that were requested during that meeting was that the $50 application fee for a credit to the stormwater service charge, if the application is accepted by the city, that that charge be credited to the next month's stormwater service charge. So we did add that language into the credit policy. Everything else, the utility ordinance is specifically related to the establishment of the stormwater utility. It provides some definitions such as impervious area, outlines what the utility, the enterprise fund can be used for, and it also has some information in there about if the city decides to implement an off-rideway stormwater drainage assistance program, some regulations and guidelines for that program. And then the credit policy itself outlines the guidelines for the, if someone wants to apply for a credit with the city, to receive a credit on their stormwater service charge, so.
All right, questions? It's not? All right, thank you.
All right, well, it's been a long time coming, so I just want to thank all of you for, for your support. But I also owe a huge thanks to John, Brian. Angie's been extremely helpful in drafting the ordinance and the credit policy, and also Brent Dewiler, my boss, for, he's been super supportive. I've been here five years, and none of this would really be possible without his support, so. Thanks, everybody, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Hey, council, comments, questions, discussion, or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council adopt the ordinance to add a new article for stormwater utility to Chapter 24 of the Code of Ordinances, and further move to adopt the resolution to approve the stormwater service charge credit policy as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of adopting the new ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you to all the people that were involved in that. Long time coming. Next, a resolution of the city of Hendersonville City Council to establish a no parking zone on the south side of Woodcock Avenue.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Blair Mahan, your Chief of Police. I'm before you tonight to ask the council to adopt a resolution to restrict parking on the south side of Woodcock Drive. This is, we've talked to several of the residents in the area who have expressed a public safety concern of getting ambulances and fire trucks and police vehicles down their street in an emergency. Currently, parking is allowed on both sides of the street, and when that happens, there's really only one lane of travel available, so opposing traffic, you know, causes an issue and a concern. So this is part of our ongoing efforts to reduce crime and improve public safety in that area. And I think that with your approval, we'll continue to monitor this and talk with residents in other parts of that neighborhood to see if this would be effective on their streets as well. So again, we've talked to the residents, they want the parking, the no parking on the south side, and we're in support of that, so we just ask for y'all's approval with this resolution.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move City Council adopt the resolution establishing no parking zone on the south side of Woodcock Avenue.
Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of approving the no parking zone, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and you can go ahead and start putting up those signs, whoever is responsible, whether it's police or Public Works or whomever. All right, City Council comments, anyone have anything they want?
Yes, this is something that was brought up today, so I apologize that I'm commenting now and haven't given you heads up. So, I just wanted to throw out the idea that when we are nominating folks to boards and commissions, we all get obviously their applications and read all about them. Is there any appetite for the public being aware, not of any personal information, other than just the names of people applying?
Wait, say that again.
Right, so, like on boards and commissions, we all get their applications, can read all about them. Members of the public cannot. Obviously so, because the information these folks probably don't, I don't know if they want to disseminate it, but they didn't choose that when they applied. But, any appetite for at least there being a list of, these are the people who have applied to be on this committee and that the council is going to consider? At least their names be provided? Because certainly if you apply to be on it, you're, you're going to tell the public, hey, I want to be on this commission. Not, not all the qualifications, just the names.
Are there laws or North Carolina policies for how that all works? There should be.
So, I've not reviewed the applications per se, but most, if not all, the information on there would be considered a public record, because when you submit it to the city, it's a, it's a public record. But generally, public records have to be requested, so it's a policy call as to whether you would make people have to request those, or you put them out there for everyone to see.
Is the name considered, if the person applying, like...
No, definitely not the name, it's not a public record.
Right, so, that's why I'm saying just the name, so we don't, just a list of the people who, who would like to be on a committee. Just throwing it out for discussion. Or maybe this needs to marinate, and we, we talk about it in July, but it, it is an interesting point that a constituent brought up to me, which is, you know, if, I might have an interest in, in saying to you, hey, I wish you would choose that person to be on that committee, or I wish you would not choose that person to be on that committee. I can appreciate members of the public maybe wanting to have some input on that. But I also appreciate that the whole application does not need to be available to everyone. It should be just the name. So, just, just a thought to throw out.
I can support that. I don't need to think about it.
Okay.
I was also thinking it might be nice to push back the application deadlines a little bit, now that we got some people interested, and have the board members that are currently on a board look at them and make recommendations. Could we do that? Just because it would help us narrow it down, because like this lists the packet that we got this time, it's like a lot of people.
The only problem with that can be things get clicky on boards.
Yeah.
And then you're choosing your friends, or your, you know, people, and the whole goal of the boards are to be diverse, and, you know, people from all areas of life, and so, I would get a little concerned about that.
It might be more overwhelming than just reading the application.
Plus, if we list the names, members of the board can see that.
That's true.
And if they want to tell us something, they can send us an email.
That's true.
Whatever they want to send us, they have an opportunity to do it like anybody else.
Yes, I agree.
That makes sense.
I, I would think giving it to the board is just yet another thing they've got to do that they probably don't want to do.
Right.
You know?
Councilmember Smith?
Ma'am?
I could include your memo, the memo that I provide to City Council, that just has the names with the terms. And I believe if Angie Beaker is okay with that, I do believe that is public record, if that's what you would prefer moving forward, I could make that a public document as an attachment.
To the agenda. Yeah, that's exactly, exactly what I think, is just people know who's applied, who we're thinking about, or who's applied and who we're going to discuss when we go to vote. If, for whatever reason, anybody has any, like, I really hope you choose that person, this way they could offer us some insight if they would like to. And once again, I don't think we're violating anything by doing that.
No, just remind you that all of the correspondence that you receive about that person would be public.
Totally, I understand, yeah, I'm not going, yeah, they're coming to us, I'm not soliciting it.
Right, but, but just, that would be public information as well, just so you're aware of that. Okay. So, would you...
Does that need to be a motion?
Do we, do we need to do anything official, or is that...
I'm feeling left out of the fist pumps.
Want to airboat?
See, I got one for the mayor.
So, Madam, what, what I think I'm hearing, I think obviously we can publish the memo, but I think also what I heard was, was suggested that, and, and maybe this is a question, well, it is a question for the City Council, is, do you want to, since we did not publish the names as part of this agenda, so, Councilmember Simpson, were you suggesting that we defer the appointments at this meeting so that the names could be published, put back on the agenda for the July meeting, where the names would be published in the agenda package? Or, so, I, I don't want to speak for anybody, and that may be two items down on the, on the really formal agenda, Miss Madam Mayor, but I just thought I would make sure I was hearing what I was hearing, and see if there's any action. So, maybe you want to percolate on that for two items, and...
Want to think about it for a couple minutes here?
And see if there's other comments.
Okay, let's do, let's do that. Any other comments from the City Council members? Not. City manager report?
Simply to point out the cash and investment policy from Mr. Buchanan, from the finance directors included in your package, and reminding everyone that there'll be no June workshop meeting, so this will be the only month, meeting this month, so just make that clear for everybody. There will not be a second meeting this month.
Okay. All right.
That was only one thing to percolate on.
I was quick percolating.
Yeah.
There is a song, you know, from my, my day.
Okay. Getting on to number 12, that, boards and commission appointments.
So, I think we should go ahead and appoint these ones that we received, except for the diversity and inclusion committee, I think we should defer that to July, because we just approved the charter.
Do you like to start working through the rest of them?
Sure.
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council appoint James Lyon to the Animal Services Board.
Okay, we're starting with Animal Services Advisory Committee. James Lyon has been nominated.
Madam Mayor, I would nominate Robin Granger.
Robin Granger has been nominated.
And Madam Mayor, I'd nominate Katie Wyble. I apologize if I messed up her last name.
Katie Wyble has been nominated. Are there further nominations? There are no further nominations, and those in favor of appointing James Lyon, Robin Granger, and Katie Wyble to the Animal Services Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and those three have been appointed. Board of Adjustment, there's one vacancy for one unexpired term.
I have one quick question.
Yeah.
There's a limit on how many boards you can serve on, correct? Like a state limit?
Depends if they're a public, as far as state law goes, it depends if they would be considered a public official or not. If it is a position that is considered a public official, like zoning board of adjustment, like planning board, it's one elected, one appointed, or two appointed. One elected, one appointed, or two appointed. If it is an advi, purely advisory and not a public official position, there is no limit under state law. So, ours would just be planning board and board of adjustment? Any, any board with quasi-judicial authority, so the Animal Services Advisory Committee would be considered public official.
You said the Animal Services?
Yes, because they're quasi, they're an appellate board for dangerous dogs. Also, the Historic Preservation Commission, anybody, any of them that have to take an oath, is a good way to think about it, would be considered a public official position and would count against that.
I knew there was something, because when I got elected here, I had to stop the Parks and Recreation Board for the county because of, so then that would have meant I wasn't elected and unappointed, and I couldn't have had elected and two appointed.
Correct. I would leave it to the counties to decide whether they felt like the park was a, a public official position or not, but generally, yes, that's correct. All right, back to Board of Adjustment, would anyone like to make a nomination at this time? Not, we have that unexpired term that we will wait until next month. Business Advisory Council. There are two vacancies for three-year terms.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Randy Hunter.
Randy Hunter has been nominated.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to, oh, wait.
Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to appoint Cam Boyd.
Okay, Randy Hunter and Cam Boyd have been nominated, are there further nominations? Not. Those in favor of Randy Hunter and Cam Boyd for three-year terms on the Business Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. All right, we're going to skip the Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, just because we have so many nominees.
Mayor, may I ask one question? So, the mayor and the city, the, the mayor and Jeff, well, many of you had informal discussions with a variety of folks following George Floyd's death last year, and one of the informal groups included Melinda Lawrence, Anthony McMean, Eric Gash, and at the, toward the end of the, the informal group, Josh Williams was, was asked to join that group. I know Josh has applied for this position, for this board, which I know you're not appointing tonight, but I do not see applications from Anthony McMean, Melinda Lawrence, and Eric Gash, since they were part of the informal group that met and had lots of discussions, would it be appropriate for staff to contact them, see if they are interested?
That was absolutely...
They may have just assumed that they were on it.
They may have assumed they were on it, but I would like, all the input they had, I would like to know if they would like to be on it.
Staff between now and July 1?
Yes.
They should fill out an application.
Yeah, yeah. Make sure Josh was on it, because he came in...
Yeah, Josh, we definitely have an application.
But he was one of the, he came in late, but he was there.
So, I'll reach out to those folks.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Downtown Advisory Board, two vacancies.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Gerald Fitzgerald, Gerald Fitzgerald, Jerry.
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Julie Buckman.
Gerald Fitzgerald and Julie Buckman have been nominated for the Downtown Advisory Board. Are there further nominations? Not. Those in favor of appointing Gerald Fitzgerald and Julie Buckman to the Downtown Advisory Board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and the motion carries, those two will be appointed. Okay, TDA staff appointment. Current staff member is Mr. Polly. Staff recommends the downtown manager, Jamie Carpenter, but it is up to the council. Anyone like to make a nomination?
So, she would be replacing Brian Polly, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. I move that the City Council appoint Jamie Carpenter to the TDA Board.
Jamie Carpenter has been nominated, are there further nominations? Not. Those in favor of appointing Jamie Carpenter to the TDA Board as the staff appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and Jamie has been appointed. Other vacancy information, we do have a few other appointments that are not, unless, unless someone knows something addition here that we could make an appointment tonight, these do have open vacancies, and we need to try to recruit some folks to fill these in. Some of them are county appointments, so we need to keep reminding the county that we would like them to fill those, those vacancies, it's hard to have a quorum when there are vacant seats. Okay. All right, that takes care of that, better than I expected. Okay. On now to closed session.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council authorize the governing board to enter into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A136, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of the state or of the United States, or not considered a public record within the meaning of chapter 132 of the general statutes, and consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, and consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of a public officer.
Okay, any discussion? Not. Those in favor of entering closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and we are in closed session. We are going to move, right?
We are going to recess, recess to the conference room behind us.
We get to go on a field trip.